Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we appreciate everyone coming out this evening. We've got a pretty packed agenda and we'll jump right in it. At the beginning, it's normally time for Mayor's Minute and Council Comments. I just wanted to go ahead and start by saying a few words. You know, this is the last regularly scheduled meeting this year, so it's actually the last regularly scheduled meeting that will be sitting up here with Mr. Bill Hartley and Mr. Kevin Wingard. I just want to say a few words. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for several years now and Mr. Wingard has been on the council for about six years and Mr. Hartley's been on it about eight now. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all of their dedication, all of their time. Obviously, we have these regular meetings, which is twice a month, but there's also special called meetings, other events like ribbon cuttings, other boards and committees that we all sit on. So it's a big time commitment and for these folks to donate their time for years now, every meeting I've been in with them, they've always, you know, tried to focus on what's best for Bristol. So I just want to say I really appreciate you guys, sitting up here with you guys. And, you know, we have a few things we wanted to give to you this evening and we have to take a picture too, so hope that's okay with you guys. But yeah, if anyone else has anything to say about them before we get started.
You know, I'll just, I'll say, you know, you know, Bill and Kevin, you all were the other people who were here when I first came into office, you know, so I've served with both of you a little bit longer than Anthony and Becky. I will miss serving with both of you, you know. We've not always agreed, me or Bill or me or Kevin, but you're both incredibly smart people, very dedicated to the city and you have a love for the city and, you know, I appreciate it. You know, I think that, you know, 50 years from now, when, you know, the story of Bristol is written and looked back on, the stuff that you all did, you know, before I got here, before me and Anthony and Becky got here, is really what got Bristol back on solid financial footing, you know, pulled us back from the brink. You know, they were sometimes hard decisions, sometimes unpopular decisions, but, you know, the things that you all did set us up for future success and growth and I really appreciate everything that you all have done for the city for all this time.
And I will echo some of the same comments. I'll just say as the newest member on council, thank you both for all that you've done for the city. I never realized what I went into being this council member until I sit behind this and sit in the seat, but I know all the time that you committed to the city, both of you all, and I know how much you care. You all have a deep passion for truly helping the city and working for the citizens of Bristol. And so, thank you both for everything that you've done and I hope you both will still be around and still be involved because I look forward to continuing to work with you all. So, thank you.
And we've got a gift for you, so Joey, yeah, come on up and we'll step to the front here and take a picture if that's okay with you guys. So now that we did that, any other comments from the council this evening?
Well, I thought we had one more meeting, so I don't really have a whole lot prepared, but I thought about it. But first off, thank you all for kind words. Thank you to the people of Bristol for giving me the opportunity to serve these past eight years. It's been a great experience. I've had the opportunity to do things that I never thought I'd do, to have some unique experiences. And in all of that, while I can't say every day was enjoyable, every meeting was enjoyable, it's been some rough times. On the whole, I have really enjoyed my time serving on council. And one of the things that made that great is not only did I have good experiences, but I got to meet along the way a lot of great people. Five of us up here, the ones before, I mean, you had some really dedicated people serving our city. Mr. Wingard, I know you'll be leaving as well. And while sometimes people think we don't always agree, I think at the end of the day, we agree a lot more than people realize. We both want the same thing. We both want our city to be healthy and strong and grow forward. We might disagree about how to get there, but one thing I will say, you came on at a tough time and you did what you said. And when you said you were going to do something, you stuck by your word and I appreciate that. Whether I agree with it or not, I appreciate that, that knew where you stood. But it's not just the people up here, it's people in the audience, people in the community. And the one thing I'll take away from all this is kind of what I just said about Mr. Wingard. When you talk to all these people, you realize that everybody wants to see our city do good. There's a lot of love for this community out there and I have no doubt that as I walk away, the city's in a better place than when I first sat up here. I have no doubt that the three up here and the two that have joined them after January 1 have the ability to keep that moving forward. And it is my fervent prayer that in the words of Lincoln, they will do what is right as God gives them the wisdom to determine what is right. So, thank you.
Well, it has definitely been a learning experience and, you know, I came on, tried to do what I could do and made some friends and made some enemies, you know, and that's just part of politics. But this is a great city and everybody that serves, whether it's on council, planning, IDA, you know, the volunteers and everybody that comes together helps make this city better and stronger. And I did come on on a tough time and, but also want to give credit where credit is due. Kevin Mumpower and Doug Flinger was a major component to getting the finances back on its feet in this city. And I know that it was, there was some tough calls that had to be made, but it set us up well and going forward, you know, the city still has some major, major obstacles. That landfill's going to be a beast. It was a beast from the beginning and it still is and it's going to be for many years down the road. And there's going to be some hard calls that have to be made, but as a community, we need to realize, you know, it's important for everybody to vote. It's important for everybody to know who they're voting for and where they stand on issues because it's council that got us into this situation and it's, and the taxpayers is the one that has to suffer, suffer the burden of everything that this council will ever do in the future or in the present. So it's important to know who you're voting for and what they stand for. But I do want to say I thank everybody for the support that I got in the community. Like I said, you know, there's, nobody can make everybody happy if you're not going to, it's not possible. But I'm leaving knowing that this city has the ability to keep moving forward and I just want to encourage everybody to stay positive, that the obstacles still are many, but together Bristol can overcome and achieve the goals that it needs to do. And in closing, I want to say it's been real, it's been fun, but there is a lot of times it was never really fun. And just Merry Christmas.
Thank you all, thank you both again. So if there's no other comments from the council, we can move forward to City Manager comments.
Yeah, council, Mr. Hartley, Mr. Wingard, it was about six years ago that I decided to apply for City Attorney. And you two were part of the council that allowed me an opportunity to serve this good city. And you all have been a true asset to the city. I know we haven't agreed often, sometimes we do agree, but the passion that you all have for this city is second to none. And to see you two leave is, it's going to be a real hole for us to fill here. Like you said, there were tough decisions that had to be made in the spring of 2017. The three that are remaining and the two that will be joining on January 3rd are going to have some tough decisions to make in the spring of 2023. But if it wasn't for the decisions that you all made in 2017, I don't think we'd be here today having the discussions that we're able to have and move this city forward the way that we should. So I appreciate the opportunity you all have given me and I hope you stay a part of the city.
Well, thank you all again. So we'll move forward to the next item, which is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. And for these non-agenda items, we had a few folks sign up and the first person is Ms. Becky Evenden.
Hi, Becky Evenden, 210 Race Day Center Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. And I know it's unlike me, but I don't have a prepared statement, so, but I got three minutes. So I'm, as you know, I'm part of the Board of Directors for Hope for Bristol. And I did want to take time since it's the end of the year just to come and talk a little bit about the landfill situation. I still have friends that aren't able to live in their home. They are sleeping elsewhere tonight because they can't be home because of how bad the landfill is. So I do just want to start with that and let you all know that that is still happening. Some of the positives that we've seen, I know yesterday the city put out an invitation to bid for well drilling and we have the owner mitigation system going forth and I'm seeing that you all are starting to put forth plans that match what the expert panel was recommending. So that is good and I am glad to see that. From my perspective, I am hopeful, like really hopeful that the steps that you're taking have done well and if they include a really good geomembrane cover and if they include really good leachate treatment, that you all will see a huge difference in that landfill because that's what I'm hearing from people that know landfills. Going into some concerns, so a couple of things, I'm looking at what you all have after you finish putting that geomembrane down on the landfill. There's not much of a plan at that point. I'm a little concerned about that. I'm concerned that what you all are talking about is essentially a federal price tag. Something that has been kind of a mismatch for us in the community and I think what we've heard from the city, like a big difference between what we've been saying in the community and what you all have been saying over the past year and a half is we have seen it as an environmental disaster. I think it took the city a long time to see that and I'm not sure if you all still quite see that. And when you're talking environmental disaster, you are talking emergency declaration when the first round of wells didn't work and you're talking appealing on state and federal level for significant help. And I think that's all that, something that you all really need to be looking at next year is how can you make that happen? Because when we're talking about getting the geomembrane cover down and just watching and waiting to see what happens, no more waste going in that landfill, like you have 20 more years where things can go wrong. In Bridgeton, they stopped taking waste in 2004 and it wasn't until 2010 that they started having widespread complaints in the community about how people were getting sick from the landfill. So you just stopped taking waste like several months ago, what's going to happen in six years? What's going to happen in 10? You're going to have the systems that you're putting in now breaking down and needing repair. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. And I also just want to communicate that we at Hope for Bristol are very much aware of what you all are facing in the coming years and the concerns and we're trying to understand what looks best for our community going forward too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. The next person that signed up is Ms. Angie Bush.
Thank you, yes, I'm Angie Bush. I live at 19310 Stone Mountain Road in Abingdon, but I spend a lot of time here in Bristol. I work here in Bristol and I go to church here in Bristol. And I'm here to comment on the Bristol Safe Zone ordinance. The majority of people who spoke to you in October told you that we do not want abortion here in Bristol. We know it is here. We, so in a hope that it won't spread, this Bristol Safe Zone ordinance has been proposed and I thank you for unanimously voting to send that zoning ordinance proposal onto the Planning Commission. I'm aware that I was, that the Planning Commission did not have it on their agenda at their last meeting. I'm also aware that there's been discussion behind closed doors about this, discussions that have included concerns, the, about legal consequences, being sued. And, but I want you to know that this cannot, that there is no price that can be put on life. And so I am here to urge you to move forward, to encourage the Planning Commission to get this on their agenda so that we can discuss this because the issue is not going to go I know that you all have heard all the facts. You've heard the scientific facts, you've heard the moral reasons, you've heard the religious reasons. You, you've been told that, truthfully, that abortion is not health care. Health care is by definition tries to restore systems or maintain systems and abortion ends a normal process in the body, which is pregnancy. It's a normal reproductive process, but by ending that process, you are also seeing another life be terminated. Abortion by definition is the termination of a pregnancy. When a pregnancy is terminated, a child is lost. And that scientifically you know is a unique DNA from the moment of conception. It is a heartbeat that has started by day post-conception 21, but before that mother even knows that she's pregnant. So you know that this is a life that has been given by God. And again, you've heard all the religious reasons. You've also heard the pain that abortion can cause women, the pain that it does cause women spiritually, physically, mentally, pain. You heard two women speak back in October of their abortion, of their experience after having had abortion several years earlier and the pain that they still carry. I want you to know that we are praying for you. I want you to do what's right. I want you to not table this issue. Do not ignore it because by ignoring it would make you indifferent or complacent and culpable. You are in a position to do what is right in the eyes of society and in the eyes of God. I urge you not to be afraid and I will continue, along with many, many others, we will continue to pray for you and those who will be following after you. And I thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Thank you. The next person that signed up is Mr. Kariko, Jeff Kariko.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Kariko. I live at 512 Meadow Drive here in Bristol, Virginia, 30-year resident of the city. My kids, all three, from first grade to 12 through school. And I also would like to speak in favor of the safe zone. I realize that it's not on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to keep it in front of your minds because it's, I just didn't want to lose it. It was spoken tonight about what happens in this council will go down generation, generation, generation. Think about your legacy. What kind of legacy do you want personally when you leave this council? As a result of what I did, this is what's happening in our city and will happen for many, many years. I think a wonderful legacy would be to say, I helped make it a safe zone. I helped do this. I think it would be very much a troubling thought to say my legacy is the termination of a lot of lives. And I'm sure you didn't sign up for that thinking, boy, I'd like to get on the council because I'd like to get involved in this issue, but nonetheless, it's here. And my heart goes out to you, but I really do encourage you to think about the legacy. Man, thousands of people will be affected. And think about a safe zone. It'd be a great legacy to leave for the future. I do appreciate you, I thank you, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kariko. The next person that signed up is Mr. Chris Perrin.
Christopher Perrin, the Marketing Director at Discover Bristol. Good evening, Mayor Farnham and members of council. Discover Bristol has been working hard on behalf of the city of Bristol, Virginia to increase awareness of, drive visitation to, and generate revenues for our city. I wanted to take a minute to provide a few updates and share some wins we have earned together. Some of you may already be aware, but I want to share again that Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine named Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia as the 2022 Top Adventure Town in the Medium Town category. Their November edition highlights each winner with Bristol topping the other 24 towns in our category. Blue Ridge Outdoors is a respected outdoor recreation publication with 350,000 readers hailing from the mid-Atlantic region from Pennsylvania to Alabama. This award is a well-deserved win for Bristol, celebrating the plentiful and diverse outdoor activities visitors can enjoy. This distinction makes our city even more enticing of a destination for those who want to hike, bike, fish, and enjoy all things outdoors. Discover Bristol is proud of the community-wide voting effort to help push Bristol across the finish line for this win. Discover Bristol continues to work diligently to provide the greatest return on investment through strategic and effective advertising and promotion efforts. Website traffic is a key performance indicator that we track. I'm happy to report that our 2022 website traffic to date is 15% higher than website visitation from 2020 and 2021 combined as a whole. Our digital advertising efforts have been strong and fruitful all year with that trend continuing in November. The performance metrics we are achieving are blowing industry averages out of the water and are the best performing campaigns for the agency that we're working with. Discover Bristol's Google Ads are performing five times better than industry benchmarks and our Discover Bristol Facebook and Instagrams are getting clicked on four times more than the travel and tourism industry partners. One reason for the success is the continued efforts of our staff to strategically optimize our plan, including embracing and utilizing new technologies that increase our ROI. All of these efforts impact overnight stays in Bristol, which generates revenues for the city through lodging tax collections. The lodging metrics we receive for the city of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia show a strong rebound from the pandemic while also outpacing previous normal years. This year's average daily rate for October, how much someone is spending per night to stay in a hotel room in Bristol, was $36 higher than October rates. And in September, the occupancy rate that we had was higher than any other month that we have seen since tracking in 2015. Bristol has such a strong tourism product and Discover Bristol is grateful for the opportunity to promote it on your behalf. Thank you for the partnership with us and this impactful work and we look forward to an even bigger year in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. That's the last person that signed up for public comment for non-agenda items, so we'll move into the adoption of our agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt our regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. Okay. The first items of our regular agenda is Proclamations Honoring Thomas Covington and Jasper Cheers on Achieving the Rank of Eagle Scout. Staff report.
Counsel, Thomas Covington and Jasper Cheers are members of the Boy Scouts of America Troop Eight located at State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol. Both individuals recently attained the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts. Both Scouts completed service projects in the community as a prerequisite for achieving their Eagle Scout rank. The foremost responsibility of the Eagle Scout is to live with honor and set an example for others to follow. The scout must be, also be loyal and devoted to his family, community, and country. The Eagle Scout has a servant's heart and stands as a protector of others and continues his service to others throughout his life. A scout will always be prepared to stand as an example to others.
All right, well, thank you. And we have both of them here this evening, I believe? Just one? Okay. So we'll go ahead and have the reading of the proclamations?
Okay. I'm just going to read both. I think it's important that both of them are read individually, so I'll just read them both individually.
Sure.
Proclamation honoring Jasper Cheers in Achieving the Rank of Eagle Scout, whereas the Boy Scouts of America have existed for more than a century and has created a strong foundation for leadership, service, and community for millions of young Americans since its inception. And whereas Boy Scouts lead by example and encourage each other to live by the values expressed by the Scout Oath and Scout Law. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement and rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America with less than 5% of scouts achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Jasper Cheers is a member of Boy Scout Troop Eight sponsored by State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol, Virginia. And whereas Jasper Cheers achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in 2022. And whereas for his community service project, Jasper constructed trash receptacles for the Bristol and Mendota Trailheads of the Mendota Trail to be used by individuals to prevent littering on the trail. And whereas Jasper's dedication and hard work to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout demonstrates his determination to prepare himself for a meaningful, impactful, helpful, and productive role in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Bristol does hereby honor Jasper Cheers of Boy Scout Troop Eight on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts. Adopted this 13th day of December, 2022. Proclamation honoring Thomas Covington in Achieving the Rank of Eagle Scout, whereas the Boy Scouts of America has existed for more than a century and has created a strong foundation for leadership, service, and community for millions of young Americans since its inception. And whereas Boy Scouts lead by example and encourage each other to live by the values expressed by the Scout Oath and Scout Law. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement and rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America with less than 5% of scouts achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Thomas Covington is a member of Boy Scout Troop Eight sponsored by State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol, Virginia. And whereas Thomas Covington achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in 2022. And whereas for his community service project, Thomas constructed horse stalls for a local nonprofit equine therapy program to provide happiness and treatment for disabled and underprivileged children. And whereas Thomas's dedication and hard work to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout demonstrates his determination to prepare himself for a meaningful, impactful, helpful, and productive role in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Bristol does hereby honor Thomas Covington of Boy Scout Troop Eight on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts. Adopted this 13th day of December, 2022.
Okay, thank you. And now we're looking for a motion from the council to accept the proclamation.
I move for approval of both proclamations as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I'd just say congratulations to both young men. It's a great honor and it's been a privilege to be able to recognize them like this. I know we've done this past couple of years and I hope that even though I won't be up here, that the council continues to do that. I know in the past, city staff has also been very amenable to working with the scouts if they have a project to help them achieve that rank of Eagle Scout. So I hope that continues and again, congratulations on this achievement.
So we do have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. And do we have Thomas here tonight or Jasper? Thomas? If you'd like, let's meet up front and we'll take a picture. Day. Staff report.
Counsel, Brenda Dunn has been working at the Bristol Public Library since 1972. Since then, Ms. Dunn has provided exemplary service to the citizens of both Bristols through her work at the library. This proclamation is to recognize Ms. Dunn for 50 years of service to our public library and to the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee.
Thank you. So now we'll have a reading of the proclamation for Ms. Dunn.
A proclamation designating December 15th, 2022, as Brenda Dunn Day, whereas Brenda Dunn began officially working at the Bristol Public Library, serving the citizens of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia on December 15th, 1972, for $1.65 per hour. Whereas Brenda Dunn has continued to provide exemplary service for the Bristol Public Library and its community for 50 years as of December 15th, 2022; and whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia recognize the valuable contributions Brenda Dunn has made to meet the needs of our citizens with professionalism and integrity during these 50 years; and whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia recognize the dedication and commitment Brenda Dunn has made to the Bristol Public Library; and whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia are privileged to honor Brenda Dunn for her unprecedented number of years of service to the Bristol Public Library and for helping to create and fulfill the library's mission of expanding minds and building community; and whereas Brenda Dunn is a library activist defending intellectual freedom and equal access to information for everyone in the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia; and whereas Brenda Dunn has served as a library page, circulation assistant, technical services worker, accountant, administrative assistant, acting director, and director of finance. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia do hereby proclaim December 15th as Brenda Dunn Day. All residents are encouraged to visit their library, explore what is new, and engage with your librarian because libraries and library workers like Brenda Dunn transform lives.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any council discussion?
50 years is an amazing achievement to be in any one position. It's definitely worth recognizing, and I appreciate all those years of service.
And I just wanted to say, I know Brenda actually couldn't make it here this evening, but she knows we were doing this. And, you know, the library has such incredible assets. It's so much more than just checking out books. It's, you know, helping folks with their resume and just so many other great services they have. And I was able to serve on the library board a little bit with Brenda, and she's such a vital asset. She knows everything that's ever happened there at the library. So we appreciate her work here in Bristol. If there's no other discussion, we do have a motion and a second. So clerk, call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnham.
Yes. The next item of our agenda is a resolution of support for an application by the City of Bristol, Tennessee for TDOT Traffic Signal Modernization Program grant funding. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Mayor, members of council, can you hear me okay? So the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee have a longstanding maintenance agreement that dictates which city maintains traffic signal equipment and operations at intersections along State Street and West State Street. The City of Bristol, Tennessee is responsible for the signal at the intersection of West State Street, Euclid Avenue, and Gate City Highway. The City of Bristol, Tennessee intends to submit an application to the TDOT Traffic Signal Modernization Program for the 2022-2023 grant cycle to partially fund the modernization and upgrade of the connected signal systems at the aforementioned intersection, as well as the intersections of West State Street and Carson Street, and West State Street and 24th Street. The safe, efficient movement of goods and people through the intersection of West State Street, Euclid Avenue, and Gate City Highway is of significant importance to both cities. The City of Bristol, Tennessee is requesting a letter of support from the City of Bristol, Virginia to demonstrate the joint importance of this intersection and the need for the requested grant funding. The City of Bristol, Tennessee has applied for this grant funding in previous years, but none of the applications were successful. This is the first time that the City of Bristol, Tennessee has requested a resolution of support from the City of Bristol, Virginia for this particular grant application. Micah Bray, transportation engineer for the City of Bristol, Tennessee, will be applying for the grant, and he's here to help answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. So next, we'll have a reading of the resolution.
A resolution of support for application by the City of Bristol, Tennessee for the Tennessee Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Modernization Program grant funding, whereas the Tennessee Department of Transportation established a traffic signal modernization program in 2019 with $500,000 in annual funding to municipalities; and whereas funds for the 2023 grant cycle are to be awarded on a competitive basis to help communities and their local traffic signal maintaining agencies modernize existing traffic signal equipment and operations; and whereas the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee have a longstanding maintenance agreement that the City of Bristol, Tennessee would maintain the traffic signal equipment and operations at the intersection of West State Street and Euclid Avenue, Gate City Highway; and whereas the City of Bristol, Tennessee intends to submit an application to the TSMP for the 2022-2023 grant cycle to partially fund the modernization and upgrade of the connected signal systems at the intersections of West State Street and Euclid Avenue, Gate City Highway, West State Street and Carson Lane, and West State Street and 24th Street; and whereas the City of Bristol, Tennessee requests a letter of support from the City of Bristol, Virginia as a demonstration of the joint importance of the traffic signal at West State Street and Euclid Avenue, Gate City Highway, to the safe and efficient movement of goods and people through both cities. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed SS4A Action Plan grant application described above is endorsed and supported by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're looking for a motion from the council to approve the resolution.
I move for approval of the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I have a couple of things. So, and this is a question for either of you. So you said that Bristol, Tennessee has applied for this in the past and has been unsuccessful. Has it been for the same project?
I believe so. And Micah, if you want to step up to the microphone. And I just, I would like to say that, so Micah is pretty new with the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and we have kind of a renewed coordination between the cities working together. And so we kind of decided together that would be a good thing for the application, to have the letter of support from Bristol, Virginia City Council. But it might not necessarily change the scoring on the application, but that it would be a nice, a nice addition to it.
Yeah. And to add to that, the scoring categories aren't definitive. I spoke with the grant management side of TDOT to get to understand better why we haven't been successful in the past. And we went over the individual scoring categories. Even though he kind of talked through those with me, he did let me know that they can change as the program evolves. So with situations unique like ours, in consultation with Melanie, we determined that it would be beneficial to have this letter of support to kind of move that needle and influence their decision-making on this grant application.
Has it been for the same project you said, or no?
It's evolved over time. Initially, it was for several intersections. And over time, my predecessor, David Metzger, narrowed down the scope of the application to just the connected signal system at West State Street for those three intersections.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. So, do the City of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee have an agreement that we basically alternate intersections along State and West State Streets that we maintain? Is that how we do it?
That's correct.
Okay. And so you guys get that big intersection, we get Euclid and Volunteer Parkway?
Yeah. I brought the list of who has what. So Bristol, Tennessee has West State Street, Euclid Avenue, and Gate City Highway. Bristol, Tennessee has West State Street, 24th Street. Bristol, Tennessee has State Street, Moore Street, Sixth Street. Bristol, Tennessee has State Street and MLK. And Bristol, Tennessee has State Street, Goodson Street, and Pennsylvania Avenue. Bristol, Virginia has West State Street, Peters Street, and 17th Street. Bristol, Virginia has West State Street and Bob Morrison Boulevard. Bristol, Virginia has State Street, Piedmont Avenue, and Seventh Street. And then Norfolk Southern is responsible for the State Street at the Norfolk Southern Railroad Crossing.
And I'll say thank you to you for coming. I know, if you replace Mr. Metzger, I've known him for several years. And, you know, obviously, big shoes to fill, I'm sure, but you're doing great, I'm sure. And we appreciate you coming to talk with us.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, I mean, I have no problem with this letter. I have no doubt this is needed, given what's going to, we broke ground on last week, just less than a mile away. My question is, if you don't get the grant, are you not going to improve that red light?
So I was prepared for this. And so was David Metzger. So last year, the Bristol NPO, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization, which oversees transportation planning for the region, adopted the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. That document outlines projects for the next 20 or so years that will improve transportation conditions throughout the region, one of which is this project. At the moment, with this funding, if we were to get the grant, this would help finance that project. But through the long-range plan, it has, has been programmed to receive federal and local funds to implement the project in the next, I believe it's 2021 and 2025. So it is one of our immediate projects that we're supposed to be initiating. And this would just go to address the overall project cost, especially as it's increased due to supply chain issues and inflation in the last two years.
I have maybe one other question, I'm sorry. Just about the specific project, you know, obviously, it's good to y'all doing Carson Lane and stuff like that, but, you know, we're interested in Euclid and Gate City Highway. So, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, those lights are the kind that are strung across the road?
That's right.
So will it be like the big metal arms, or?
Yes. Yeah. We would have one masked arm that extends, I believe it's on the Virginia side, but I'd have to look at that grant application again, because I did not prepare the diagram of the overall project. But it would be one masked arm that would span the entire intersection.
I think that'd be good. I mean, I know they're probably safe the way they are, but it makes you nervous when you're sitting under the red light and it's swinging back and forth like this. So.
Yes.
I mean, that'll be good, and I'm sure it'll be more efficient and, you know, make the intersection much safer, because that's a very busy intersection.
Well, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for working with Melanie. And I think, I'm glad we're talking about this, because I think a lot of people don't even realize the complexities of certain things like intersections when we're in two different states. And we've talked a lot about, like, the West State Street corridor anyway, connecting downtown to Hard Rock on the Virginia side here. So definitely coordination and communication is definitely good, and I appreciate you all working together on things. So.
Thank you for having me.
So if there's no further questions or discussion, we do have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnham.
Yes. The next item is a resolution for blanket project funding commitment and for blanket signature authority. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a resolution that we do, I think, every two years in regards to VDOT project funding. This resolution just allows me, and it commits the city to providing local funding to VDOT projects, and allows me as a city manager to sign off on those projects as we get VDOT funding for those projects.
Okay. So we'll have a reading of the resolution.
Resolution for blanket project funding commitment and for blank signature authority, whereas the City of Bristol administers transportation projects under the agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation; and whereas the City of Bristol desires to provide clear commitment for funding these transportation projects and clear signature authority for the signing the project administration agreements. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, that the City of Bristol, Virginia hereby commits to fund its local share of preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction as applicable of the projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation in accordance with the project financial documents. And to the city manager is authorized to execute all agreements and/or addendums for any approved projects with Virginia Department of Transportation. Adopted this 13th day of December, 2022.
Okay. Thank you. So we're looking for a motion from the council to approve the resolution.
I move for approval of the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any council discussion?
I had a question, but I think Mr. Reed's answered it. It seems every, you said two years?
I think it's every two years.
Two or three.
Yes.
I know this is typical for grants to have that within a certain period of time. So that was my only question, because I remember doing this before.
Yeah, I don't think we did it last year. I think it was the year before.
Okay. All right. If there's no further questions or discussion, we do have a motion and a second for approval. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnham.
Yes. The next item is a public hearing for updates to Chapter 50, Article 2, Division 18, Section 50 hyphen 242, definitions, addition, and deletion of permitted uses in Division III land uses. So I hereby open our public hearing, and I ask the Planning Commission to open their public hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We now open the joint public hearing.
Thank you. We had one person sign up for a public comment for this item, and that's Mr. Michael Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, members of staff, members of the planning commission. This is, I wanted to talk about a topic I mentioned to the planning chair before the meeting. Of course, the appropriate way of bringing that up is part of the public hearing. That way, it's all on the record. I like the idea, of course, that these are necessary definitions. My only, my concerns that I would like to bring up, though, are that the changes assign a day center, confine that to the B3 zones, as I understand it. That's my understanding.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And bus terminals are similarly allocated exclusively to B3 zones. I guess my recommendation would be that whereas uses are generally allowed in more intensive zones, that perhaps bus terminals could also be allowed in M1 and M2 zones. And whereas our current day centers are both in R3 zones, which would not be allowed by right under this proposal, that perhaps it would be good if the, if the land, landscape ordinance were in place. I know that that's a longer-term project. But it would be good if day centers could be allowed in R3 and R4 zones, perhaps with a special use permit and with appropriate landscaping. The two existing ones are not where they would impinge on residential neighbors, but we want to make sure that in any future proposals, the neighbors are protected, and landscaping could help towards that. But R3 and R4 zones are already rather intensive residential uses, and we certainly don't want to do anything that might impede the current day centers that we have. If they were allowed to operate with a special use permit, then the current ones would only need the special use permit to be grandfathered, rather their entire use as a whole. That would allow them to expand as necessary later on, because they are doing great, a great work for the City of Bristol, and we want to do whatever we can to support them. So maybe that's something that y'all could discuss, whether R3 and R4 zones may be useful, as well as the more intensive zones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. And that was the only person that signed up for this item for our public hearing. So staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Put that up there. It's a little small. I understand you do have a copy in your packet. So, so staff has determined, looking through the zoning ordinance that was approved at the beginning of 2021, that we have, excuse me, permitted uses under the land uses section, but we don't have a correspond- but we don't have a corresponding definition for all of those. And while most of these are fairly basic and I guess you could kind of say, you know, involve some common sense, it's still a best practice to have that definition to go along with the permitted use. We have had a couple of situations just since I have had this position where it has come up, where there was no definition, and then we have tried to come up with a definition of our own. And then that's problematic just because it's not in the code. So we felt like this would be a good time to go ahead and do this. As you can see, you have a list of these. As I mentioned, most of them are fairly common sense, gardening, public parks, cemetery, but it does avoid any issues further down the line, just in case there was something that was close. In the process of doing this, we kind of also took a, you know, were able to maybe add a couple of new definitions, a couple of new land uses. It was already brought up with day center and I will bring these comments to the planning commission at their next meeting. And if the planning commission wishes to make those changes, then it would be brought with the ordinance at the next meeting with the council. One of the reasons we did the B3 with the day center, A, it is most B3 areas are on transit routes for those who have trouble with transportation, as well as they are more equipped for, you know, such a more commercial use, a little bit further away from residential areas. We decided, right now, the definition has passenger terminal, which covers both rail and bus, and we wanted to split that out to make them a little more specific for rail and then just for bus. Of course, this bus terminal definition does not include public transit, does not include government, it would only be for private companies. The bus, we had for B3 districts, the rail would be permitted in a B2, which is where it is now, but also B3, M1, M2 and the flexible redevelopment because all of those districts are kind of surrounding the B2 right where the train station is. In case any of those properties were ever rezoned, it would kind of cover our bases as far as that goes. We also added a little bit to the museum definition to add an event space to be able to have at a museum, because there are a lot of museums that do have small, say a wedding party or a little party for a corporate event. And what with so many of the historic homes in Bristol that are being redone and, you know, brought back to the way they were, we felt that allowing the museum in an R2 or an R3 district where a lot of these homes are, to be allowed by special use permit would be a good idea as far as that goes. Last thing on there that I have, dance and music studio is covered under art studio, but it also doesn't have its own definition. So we're just kind of taking that out of that one definition and adding it to itself. And that is all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? So just again, this is the public hearing, so we don't take any formal action on this tonight.
Correct. It would go to the planning commission at the next meeting, Monday, the 19th, and then back to the city council for yes or no first reading at the January meeting.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and hereby close our public hearing and I'll ask the planning commission to close theirs as well.
Planning commission hereby closes the joint public hearing.
Thank you. And thank you, planning commission members, for being here this evening. The next item is the supplemental budget appropriation totaling $430,000. Staff report.
Requesting approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the FY 2022-23 budget year in the amount of $430,000. The breakdown on that appropriation would be $275,000 for the general fund and $155,000 for the solid waste disposal fund. The breakdown on the general fund, $275,000 includes the $100,000 that you approved for an appropriation to Bristol Country Music Association to cover the birthplace of country music. Additional amount, that will get that fully budgeted. And then you may know that the golf courses had some pretty good success with their membership drive. In fact, they have exceeded the expectation on what that drive has done and they've, they're committed to a percentage of the additional membership fees. So because they've exceeded the new membership fees, the associated payments to the marketing company are exceeding budget. So that's a good thing. We're going to exceed revenues for the golf course. So they need an additional $20,000. The drive is winding down, so I would imagine this would be our last request for additional funds for that membership drive. The last part of this appropriation request is for the solid waste fund and we have both the general fund transferred to solid waste, as well as the expenditure out of the solid waste fund to cover additional professional services totaling $155,000. Those are for two particular work orders. We have Work Order 2023-LFG-009, which is Stage 1 Capital Project Engineering Design Construction Bid Documents, Construction Administration and CQA for landfill number 588. That's $133,000. The remaining $22,000 is for Work Order 2023-LFG-11, Surface Emissions Monitoring, SWP. That's for number 498, as well as landfill 221. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. So we're looking for a motion from the council to approve the budget appropriation.
I move for approval of the supplemental budget appropriation for $430,000 as requested.
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second for approval. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Farnum.
No. The next item is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2 hyphen 3711 point A1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body, appointment of council members to certain boards.
I move that we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley.
Yes.
Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene an executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley. Naev.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes. The next item of our agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Naev.
Yes.
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 Farnum.
Yes. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.